Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
All right, this is, it is 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 6th of August. This is the Wyndham Northeast Unified in Perrin's Elementary School District comprised of Grafton, Westminster, and Athens. And we're having our special meeting this evening. And we have the bulk of our board members and a whole bunch of guests. So to start things off, what I'd like to do is have the board members introduce themselves. And we'll start with Melissa. You're on my media right here on my screen. So why don't you say hi and say where you're from?
My name's Melissa Carlstrom, and I'm from Westminster.
Next on my screen is Jessa. You want to do the same?
I'm Jessa West Clark from Grafton.
Cheryl Charles, I see you next.
Cheryl Charles, Westminster.
And I understand that, I understand that Lynn is on. Lynn, you want to say hi?
Hi, my name is Lynn, and I'm from Athens.
Is our friend Charles with you tonight?
No, he's not.
Well, tell him we miss him.
I will. He has some sick family members.
Yeah, I know. He's been dealing with issues around that. So we fully understand and get it. Now, we do have 32 and counting participants, which adding to the well over 200 that were at the Wyndham Supervisory Union Meeting is probably setting some sort of record. I do want people to know that the WNESU last night, as a matter of record, did vote to, in favor of the hybrid plan being offered by the Supervisory Union, and that in favor of and as an alternative to the five-day plan that was broached by the Rockingham School Board with a great deal of attendant publicity. We will, as part of our normal agenda, have communications and public comment. We will try to keep this orderly. Do want to make sure everybody has the right to speak on it. I do also want to make folks aware that on a personal basis, I have a 7 o'clock engagement that I can't miss. It's called Anniversary, and I'm not going to. And if people wish to, you know, contact me at the, at the Old Tavern Outdoors. That's where they can find me. I'll be the one with the smile and the beer. So there you go. Now, I need to adopt the agenda, and I understand both we've got some numeric issues here and there's an item that, that our superintendent, excuse me, our superintendent wants to add a personnel item. Is that correct?
No, I don't have anything.
Well, I understood from Lynn Carey that she had a, an approval of a contract issue.
I have a new hire that I.
Right. And, and I mentioned this because normally new hires are on, on a warned item and not added at the last moment, but it sounded like there was some urgency in getting this done, and I need your board, the board permission to add this. And I would like to add it, but I would entertain a motion to do so as an item eight. And we will make director's comments in nine. And the missing 11 will be the date of the next board meeting, which is incorrect, by the way, on this screen, on this agenda. So is, do I have any objection to adding a new hire approval to the, to the meeting this evening as an item eight?
I move that we add it to item eight. Ms. Lynn Morgan.
Thank you, Lynn. Any objections? Not hearing any, I will cast one vote, and we will do that. So, all right. Now, we're on communications and public comment. We are at 38 participants and counting. And I'm trying to figure out how we manage this. What I'd like to do is make certain that we have parents and community members get their first dibs at it, and then include the teachers in the next round and include, and then go from there. I think that's the fairest way to do this. I may call your name, not any preference, but because it shows up on my screen. I beg your indulgence on all this. We make comments to two minutes simply because we'd like to keep the meeting a little shorter. Last night ran nearly four hours, and we have a lot of very tired board members who I'm, I feel have, deserve a little mercy.
Jack?
Yes?
Do you want me to assist you? Like last night, if anyone would like to speak, all they have to do is put their, put it in the chat saying, "I'd like to speak," and I will call on them as they come up.
You know what? That would be vastly easier than my, just kind of walking through a list for, now we're at 40 participants. So yeah, why don't we do that? If you wish to speak, folks, what we'll ask you to do is post your name, make a request to speak, and our superintendent will call your name, unmute you, and just keep in mind the time. And again, I ask a little mercy because people were, some of us were up till 1:00 in the morning fielding questions, either during the meeting or afterwards last night. So go ahead.
I don't have anything in the chat right now.
All right.
Requests.
All right. Is there anybody that?
We got one.
Okay.
Emily Leesai.
Emily, you're on.
All right. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thanks. I was at that, attending that board meeting last night, and it did take a very long time. All right. Let me just get up, make what I want to say. All right. So I'm Emily Leesai, and I'm speaking as a Westminster community member, a parent of children in the school district, and a teacher at WCS. I'd like to ask that our board approve the hybrid model proposed by the, for the first six weeks of school, proposed by the Task Force for School Reopening. This group, composed of professionals from all sectors of our school, have worked very hard this summer to create a plan that allows for safe reopening. It meets the guidelines set forth by the State of Vermont and the CDC. That was no small feat, and we can trust that they have the health and safety, both physically and mental, mentally, of our students and staff as their top priority. We've been careful and frankly lucky in our community, but we're by no means immune from this virus. I believe, I'm gonna just cut it a little shorter. I believe that the proposed plan allows for smaller cohorts of students to be in attendance with the one-day cleaning in between. I feel that this model would provide for spacing in our classrooms of the recommended six feet. It would allow teachers to focus more directed instruction when they're face-to-face with the students. And I also believe that beginning with this hybrid model, it gives us a chance to prepare our students, our staff, and our families for two likely scenarios. The one that we really want, which would be that it's safe enough to return full back to school, or the one that we hope won't happen, that we need to go remote full-time. Students will have the practice, and they'll have the setup to model, and to model each of, sorry, for each of these models. So as a parent, I know that what my schools, my children love about school is being there the way it runs normally. This is not going to be normal, but I do believe that that hybrid model that's prepared by a task force will allow our district the opportunity to return safely. So please adopt that model. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I just want, as a point of record, to be, make sure everyone is clear that the, that the SU adoption last night of the hybrid model is effectively binding on the, on the individual boards. The, what we will be discussing tonight will be an approval, so there is a pro forma approval, but the bulk of our discussion will be on the implementation plans that have been part of, part of our packet this evening. And we may at some point ask our superintendent to put them up, or the presenters to put them up. Who else we got?
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next up, and I'm just going by names that are on there, would be Mama Swan.
Mama Swan?
Mama Swan.
Hi, this is Susan Swan. I'm a teacher at the high school.
Yep.
And with what you just said, Jeff, that last night's vote is, is binding, then I would just like to commend the WNESU Board for adopting the plan that was put forth by all of those people who spent a lot of time this summer. And, and that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I compliment all of our members who were in attendance last night. They were very effective, I thought. Who else we got? Mr. Pratt?
As of right now, let's see. Crystal Webster.
You're up, Crystal.
Hi there. I spoke last night at the big meeting. I think the big meeting might not have been the right place for me to speak because I think so many people spoke last night. A lot of things were said. And basically tonight, because we're at our smaller meeting with our principals and our teachers, I just would like to express the concern of the online days, that students will be at home while their current teacher is teaching other students, that there be enough support for parents. My son needed someone every day. I apologize. I need someone to touch base with at least my child every day, and that's very important. Kelly Hallig is amazing, amazing teacher. And I know that she'll go above and beyond, but she shouldn't have to do two jobs. And I just, I just want to make sure that that's addressed within our district and our schools. And I don't feel as though last night was probably the right place to put that, and I wanted it to be heard tonight. Thank you.
I want to apologize for being a concerned parent. Thank you. Who else we have?
No one as of right now.
Well, excuse me. We have review and approve of board minutes. I didn't even look to see we have them. These would normally be approved in our regularly scheduled meeting. Do people want to skip past that and move and continue on? Or do we want to entertain a motion on that? Because I don't even have the minutes in front of me.
Jack, this is Cheryl. I, I do have the minutes. We can, I think, pretty quickly deal with those. And I wanted to make a comment about the invitation to people to speak in this public comment session. So let me come back to that. Let me, with respect to the minutes, on the second page, there is committee assignments, support staff negotiations. Jack Brier was appointed or assigned to the support staff negotiation. Just above it, you're assigned to teacher negotiations, and just below that, it repeats teacher, but the concept was actually support staff. So it just needs to be corrected there. And I think, as I see that, that was, that was the only thing that was material. So I move that we approve the minutes as corrected.
All in favor of adopting the minutes as corrected for July 16? Let's see, one, two, three, Cheryl. And let's say you, who are we missing? Oh, Lynn. Lynn, are you there?
Yes. I thought you told my hand. No, yeah, I'm good with it.
All right. Thanks. I, I can't, you're muted. My apologies there. All right. So that's been taken care of. You did have a note, Cheryl, on, on the communication and public comment, please.
Right. My, my comment was this, that given that the Supervisory Union approved the reopening plan last evening, and we will be discussing the plan in more detail tonight, I wondered whether people might want to offer additional, given their understanding of the plan, that it is a hybrid model, and maybe people want to hear a brief description of that. But I wondered if people had concerns of the kind that Crystal just offered. You know, we know what the plan's going to be now, but are there additional things that might help it be even better from the point of view of parents, teachers, and community members who are here with us tonight? So the issue isn't whether or not to approve this plan. The issue is how to make it even better. That's just a, an observation I would offer.
Now, I'm going to anticipate that by the time we get into the meat of this, someone named Cheryl Charles would be the acting chair of this board, and we'll probably get to, get to rodeo that. And I look forward to hearing how you did. Sounds good to me. And now we are on to the reports, which is superintendent and assistant superintendent. Is Lynn here tonight? I didn't see.
She'll be joining us shortly.
Okay, fine. Let's have you take things from this point at 5:00 A. District updates, reopening of schools. Tell us for the record what's up, in case anyone wasn't painfully aware of what's up.
Well, last night, we had a brief SU board meeting. It's lively discussion. You know, we appreciated the 208 people that it topped out at. I think that's, for me, that's one of the reasons I, you know, I like this format. We really are able to have people participate without having to leave their house. So I want to thank everyone who participated last night. So as you all know, the SU Board did approve the, the overall plan for reentry, which is the hybrid plan. And, you know, it's, I think it's been a learning experience for all of us. And I know one of the things that, you know, I took away from last night was that making it clearer to everyone that the SU plan is pretty much a generalized overarching plan that is put out there. And the real specifics and everything really come down to each individual school's plan that they'll be sharing with the boards. So, you know, that was a little, you know, learning experience there is that the specifics really come from each different school. And the reason for that is that in the overall SU plan, you really can't reflect the specifics that each individual school needs. And you'll, you'll get an understanding of that in a little bit when the principals, you know, review their plans with all of you. So I think overall, we want to continue to push forward. We want to get in a, in a spot where teachers know the plan, parents need to know the plan, the community knows the plan, so we can all come together in this and continue to look at it and revisit it throughout the time that it's in place. I would say it's more looking at the plan as it, it's at the most going to be six weeks. But in that six weeks, we do want to make sure that we try to work with it as much as possible based on the ever-changing needs of each of the schools and what we're seeing based on the COVID. So people need to know, it's a fluid plan. It's a, it's a, it's a constant, it's a working document. And even though we're proposing it for, for six weeks, within that six weeks, if there are drastic changes, we want to make sure as teachers and educators and administrators that we're looking at that plan and hopefully trying to adjust it for the better. Because the ultimate goal is to get all the kids back in school when it's safe. So that's a brief update from last night. I think, I don't know if you want to make it part of superintendent's, but I think the bulk of the conversation will probably come from the principals' plans and what they've been working on. So I can leave it at that right now.
Fair enough. In that case, I guess this is the place where we start. And Liz, why don't you, why don't you set us off here?
Sure, yeah. So I like that Chris mentioned that this is a working document and that we'll be changing and adapting as needed. And this is a proposal for the first six weeks. So following what was said last night, we're moving into the hybrid model, where students will come either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. So if your student comes Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday is a full remote model, which means that they will meet as a whole class with their teacher in a morning meeting, similar to this spring. And then the, all staff will be using a common planning template. So the teacher will be able to share with families exactly what's happening when they're having their in-person learning, and exactly what's happening and expected to happen when they are working at home. So if your child's in school on Monday and Tuesday, and remote on Wednesday, on Thursday and Friday, they're expected to complete assignments at home. We are offering office hours, so if your child is stuck, there will be a set schedule where they can open into, welcome into a Zoom with probably not their classroom teacher, but as another staff member who will understand the learning template and understand their expectations to walk them through. Because what we decided, discovered from the spring is that kids were getting hung up on kind of small things that can be worked out easily, but it was just time-consuming. So we offering, we're offering some office hours. Also, if your child is the type of child who just needs a staff member's face to do their assignment, I have a couple of those at my home. And so that's their time to just connect with another staff member that they know and move through their assignment at home, and those will be available to all students.
I don't want me to cut you off, Liz. I don't want to interrupt your thought. I'm wondering, Chris, the, the principals put together these rather nifty packages in green and white are, are two schools' colors, and I'm wondering if you might be able to pull them up and post them during these discussions?
Can I share my screen?
Yeah, if you could, that would be lovely. If you can permit that.
I think I have to be the host.
Yeah, well.
You should be all set, Liz. You can try sharing now.
Let me try.
I always want this protocol because I think when we have documents, person talking to the document ought to be able to share the document. Or switch things up.
I, my Zoom is actually not allowing me to share, share my screen right now. Is there, Chris, are you able to share that screen?
Should have asked you to have these things, Chris, on my bodies.
Do that. If for some reason I have, you know, people can share their screens, but let me call it up on, on mine.
I have it ready. I just can't share it.
Maybe I could just talk a little, went on it. Can I talk a little bit more while we're figuring that one out? Sure. So because Westminster has a fair number of staff, we're creating four smaller pods within our school to be a grade level or a grade level span, so that we can assign staff members as a pod to work with that grade or grade cluster. It'll be their one grade or two grades together, like K and 1 will be a pod. Second grade will be its own pod. In order to do that, we're kind of streamlining, streamlining some of our efforts. So title teachers will be assigned to a pod to only work in that group. And essentialist will be assigned to a pod per week, so they will work closely with that pod. They'll be available to teach their essential, but they will also be available to help with students, to help with office hours, to just help with whatever is needed when the students come in and what we, what we're welcoming in in the fall. Also, that will streamline, you know, less cross-contamination between pods, less contract tracing, because they're going to be contained into one smaller group within the school. And if student, if teachers are absent, it allows us to flex a bit with staffing and not have to reach out into a subpool, which I think will be very difficult this year. I'm trying to think. I'm looking down my report.
You should be able to share now, Liz.
Okay, let me try. I, I kind of think it's actually my Zoom or something. It's just not.
All right. Let me see if I can call, I'll call it up on my screen. Just keep talking.
Okay, I'll keep talking. So our extracurricular after-school program will hopefully start on the third week of September, and we're going to be following the same guidelines that any summer school, 21st century summer program that was successful this summer did follow the similar pod structure. And I think that our after-school director, Leah Geller, at both sites, is looking to see what's successful at the very beginning and to kind of replicate that with the after-school program. So there'll be more information as we get started on that. Recession, we'll be holding two recesses. I know last year Westminster did one large K6 recess. So we'll be doing two recesses, a K2 and a 36, in order to clean before recess even starts, and between the two recesses and after. There'll be, you know, like you've probably read in the other reports, there'll be no visitors this year into the school, very minimal. When possible, we're going to be meeting via Zoom with parents. Whole school gatherings will be, will not happening this year until, you know, at least at the beginning, until we can safely do so. Breakfast and lunch will both be in the classroom. We'll be pre-ordering meals. They'll come prepackaged. Staff will distribute those to students. Our maintenance, the building grounds will be cleaned at least three times a day. Like I said, playground will be cleaned before and after recess. They've installed, they'll be installing shields at the front office and other shields to work in small groups. We have disinfectant. We have hand sanitizer everywhere, electrostatic disinfectant, signage, and we have upgraded our air quality system to meet the guidelines. Arrival and dismissal. So as you know, the buses can have 26 students per bus. Students will have assigned seats, one student per seat, younger students sitting up front, facing forward. Temperature checks will be taken upon entering the bus. And health screening will be done before the child has entered the bus. So we're asking for families, if you are with your, to be with your child at the bus stop and waiting until your child has completed their health screening, because if they are not, if they had a temperature that day, they'll be asked to return home until they are 24 hours fever-free. If families are arriving, and the bus will come on the gym side of the building, and parent drop-offs will be happening on the front side of the building. We'll be having stations in the front for families to pull up, and we're asking that everyone to stay in their car, pull up until the staff member asks the child to exit their car, and then we can do the health screening at that point. And dismissal, students may pick, or families may pick up at the end of the day. I do have an updated dismissal. Again, this is a working document, so we met today as a task force again, and we're, we're constantly thinking of ways to fine-tune it and make sure that we're 100% complete in communicating, which will go out to families tomorrow. So in dismissal, we'll have a staggered dismissal, so that not all students are exiting at the same time. There'll be a five-minute differentiation between what pod you are in. And if you have students in two different pods, both of your students will exit at the same time as your youngest student. So depending on what pod your youngest student is in. And we're asking just for adults to remain in their vehicles, and a staff member will walk your child to your car at the end of the day. And for dismissal with bus, a staff member will walk the children to the appropriate buses, you know, minding our social distancing. So with health, we're just wanting to communicate with families and with staff as much as possible. We welcomed a new, a new nurse onto board this fall, and we're going to be creating a video to share with families prior to the start of the school year. Hand sanitizer dispensers are located throughout the school. Each classroom has additional hand sanitizers mounted by the entrance. We do have an isolation room that's equipped to caring for those who display COVID symptoms during the day. Families must have three emergency contacts, because if there is, as their student is showing signs of COVID during the day, we'll need them picked up immediately. The school nurse will educate the staff on COVID symptoms. She's been an integral part of our crisis team, as have all the nurses in the SU, as they provide a lot of great guidance for the schools. So masks are provided, are to be provided by families. We're asking that you send your child with a clean mask every day. We're also recommending that you send your child with multiple masks as they can, you know, break during the day, get dirty, just have other options throughout the day for your student. You know, if your student is sent home with a fever, the school will follow the CDC and state recommendations for returning to school. And the school nurse will oversee re-entry and will communicate directly with families. So we have all the faith in the world for our wonderful new school nurse. Our safety drills will follow, they'll continue to occur just according to state regulations and the guidelines. And we'll develop protocols around that to do that safely in the context of the school. So at the bottom, I just have a few expectations that are just helpful for families to know, just somewhat redundant. But we're required to wear masks all day. If students are outside at recess and practicing social distancing, they may take off their masks. We also have a great outdoor space in Westminster. We've purchased five tents to put up throughout the schoolyard to provide some shade. We're also designating a tent per pod to access. But there's also other outdoor space throughout the schoolyard, too. So when you're outside practicing social distance, your child can take off their mask. But when they're in the building, they will be asked to have their mask on when, to keep everyone safe. We are practicing social distancing and engaging online learning on Wednesdays. We are going to be sending home our iPads and Chromebooks right away. So students will bring home and their, bring their Chromebook home into school daily. So we will provide those with a case for your child to carry their device in daily. And then we're just asking that personal items should remain at home, like stuffed animals, toys, et cetera, just to keep everyone safe. That was a quick run-through of our plan, but are there questions?
I don't see any questions for you yet, Liz.
Oh, I actually see one to me privately. How will testing be done for children having issues? Are you, I'm guessing you're referring to like academic testing. We will be doing our normal map testing and our benchmark assessments that we do annually, you know, throughout the year. Anyway, we will be doing those, you know, not the first week, not the first two weeks. But as we get into the end of September, we'll be looking at benchmark assessments that'll drive our instruction, like they always do. And I think that we'll need further guidance on our student services department about when those, if your child was maybe being tested through our school's special services department, that we would want a little bit of guidance because I know some students were just about to receive some testing and then we went into dismissal. So that guidance should be coming as we get closer to the beginning of the school year about that schedule. And Jack, I see your question. I feel like we do have sufficient help to clean our facilities. And I don't feel like we'll need additional equipment at this point. I feel like we are pretty in a real good place as far as maintenance to the building.
Procedurally, I'm going to do the round robin thing we've done in our other meetings where I will ask each board member if they want to say anything because it's something easier. And, and we will do the same with Helen and try to use the same model. And I'm saying this because I won't be here in about 10 minutes, but we'll really be up to Cheryl how she wants to run this. Melissa, do you have any questions?
I was curious if either school will be using either the West West building or the Athens building to help spread out.
So we were not expecting to use the West West building to spread out. And we were holding off for the first six weeks to actually send students to Studio Y just because of the busing and how long that would take to clean buses and what that protocol looks like. So we wanted to kind of see what busing looked like first before we started our trips out to West West. So I was hoping that that location would still be available for us to continue Studio Y. Because it's almost ideal, you know, for classes to go and be contained for the day or two days.
Yeah. And then besides getting the tents outside, have you guys done anything else to prepare for outdoor learning?
We do have Wi-Fi out by the pavilion. So that's another effort that we had for outdoor learning. But there's already a good amount of space. And I know that teachers have ordered for their own classrooms materials that could be used both in the classroom and outside. So preparing for, you know, a box where you can carry all your stuff in, in the classroom and outside. And I guess that preparing for outdoor learning would really be in the planning stages of our instruction and not stuff we can do structurally, but more things you can do in your planning or your academic planning.
Cheryl, I'm going to ask you to ask.
Well, uh, am I muted or, yeah, it looks like I'm unmuted. Okay. Maybe building on Melissa's question, Liz, you were just referring to some of the planning that will have to do with making use of the outdoor spaces for learning purposes. If that'll come perhaps later, you're, you're not, right now, you're working on the physical, structural spaces. Can you describe a little bit, though, of how you might be using the outdoors for actual learning?
Right. So we'll have one tent per essential because ideally our essentials will all happen outside. And then teachers are being encouraged to take their kids out whenever possible. So they are purchasing, you know, clipboards so their students can write outside. They are purchasing maybe a certain type of chair that their students can take outside. So that's type. But I also think some of the planning in their units for the fall would involve outdoors. So that's kind of not work that I have been part of in this part. I've just been trying to take care of the structural and the safety concerns.
Fair, fair enough. Thank you. I, I get that. And as I, as I've listened to people buying things, quite a bit of this is said to be reimbursable under the CARES Act, the federal monies that will help us get reimbursed for some of the special supplies you're buying. I'm anticipating that. Is that the case?
I'm hoping. I'm keeping track of all of our spending so that we can, and try to be reimbursed, reimbursed for as much as possible.
Thank you. Jack, are you going around the circle still? You're.
You're muted.
You're muted, Jack.
There we go. Well, I can't ask other people to ask questions. You can't hear me. Jessa West Clark, I was going to ask if you'd like any questions.
Um, the only question I have at the moment is that on the SU plan and the individual school plans, we have that if a child's at the health screening has a fever of 100.4, they go home for 24 hours. But if a child develops a fever during the day, they go to the COVID isolation in the CDC protocol, which is seven days of the negative COVID test or 10 to 14 days quarantine right now. Which, which is it?
That's a great question. I would think that if during the day, I mean, right now, our guidance is that if they have a fever of 100.4, then they are 24 hours fever-free. That's the guidance I've read from the AOE and that exactly what you said. If they have a COVID symptoms during the day, then they are, they are to go home and then have a negative COVID test after seven days. So I guess I would ask, I would ask my admin team on what we're, what we're doing on that. I don't, I don't have an answer for you, Jessa.
Onto that. The bottom line is we have, we follow the CDC, you know, guidelines in regards to people showing symptoms. So what you see there is bits and pieces of that. If, if a student comes down with a temperature in the school, that's when they're, you know, they're put in the isolation room until someone can come pick them up. And then from there, they have to follow the guidelines from the CDC in regards to 24 hours of temperature. And, you know, that's the, that's the flag there. It's in, they're reporting it. So if it's more than 24 hours and they don't have a temperature, then the, it's, the, the COVID isn't an issue. It's, it's the checks and balances because now we're trying to weigh the two between, is it a COVID? Or is it just a common cold or what have you? So it's, we initially react right away as we don't know what it is. So we're following procedures. They get them, they picked up. And then at the home, the family follows up with the guidelines that needs to be followed in regards to reporting and checks and balances for fevers and stuff like that.
So if I am understanding this correctly, if they're in the isolation room and they go home with a fever and the fever breaks and they're fever-free and it's just a quick typical fever that kids get, then they can come back 24 hours after they, after being fever-free. But if the fever persists, then it's a more serious situation and they need to pursue a COVID test?
Yes, and reach their medical professionals.
And also, I've been in the, I've had to contact the Department of Health several times over students in my school. And it, there's a difference when there's two symptoms, like so a fever is one thing. But then when they have a fever and a symptom from the list, that's different when they have two different symptoms. Because if that makes any sense to people, then just one in the decision-making process. Complex.
Thank you, Melissa.
I want to make sure Lynn, even though she's not my first screen, she's not last in any sense. Lynn, do you have any questions here?
I had one question. One question that was brought up to me by a parent was in reference to the Chrome pads. She was mentioning that her child has special needs and he will break the Chrome pad given enough time. So she has to use a personal pad because she can't afford to replace it. What is the policy on children using, especially the special needs children, using the Chrome pads and damage coming to them?
So Lynn, that's kind of a case by case. But I would think for what it sounds like, if it's not an appropriate tool for the child's learning, then we need to find an appropriate tool that's going to help them learn. So it sounds like if the child's unable to access their learning with a Chromebook or an iPad, then maybe there's other tools that we can use with that child for remote learning.
Well, it sounded like he could use it, but it was just his disability. He tends to break things. So she wouldn't let him use the schools because she couldn't afford to replace it. So she uses a personal iPad, which didn't work as well. So I didn't know if we had anything in, thought about to deal with students, especially our special needs children that aren't capable of really handling them safely.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, it's like Liz says, we look, we try to look at that as a case by case basis. And knowing that we do have these different circumstances and, but we, that shouldn't, that will not and shouldn't disrupt the learning for that child. The, the, the IEP team would work with them as well as the teachers and the principal. So we're trying to have these wraparound services that, okay, if it's not, if it's not an iPad or a Chromebook, what devices might be a little more sturdy that we can get to them to do that. But we don't want to put a blanket statement on that because really we want to have the IEP team and, and everyone look at it on a case by case basis.
Okay. So in this reference, just suggest to her to check in with the IEP team?
Yes.
Okay, will do.
All right. I've also, I don't know if you're still collecting questions and comments from the community, Chris, but this would be sort of the ideal time to do that, at least a little bit. We do have a, an item in the agenda specifically for the community to comment. But there's specific items rather than statements, questions about this plan. I would not object to having folks ask them, with the emphasis, I must say, on, on parents. Because teachers, as much as we love you all, you're going to have another chance at this tomorrow during the day. But the parents really need to have it at this moment. Is there anybody that's put their hand up one way or the other, Chris?
I don't have anyone on my end, but I made Liz a co-host, so she may have some on hers, but I, I don't.
All right.
I don't see anybody on mine.
All right, very good. Then I guess Helen, it's your turn.
All right. I'm going to see if I can share my plan.
Yes. By the way, I'm about to turn the meeting over because I have families saying, where are you? And I'm going to go do that. So with your, with your permission, everyone, I'm going to turn this over to Cheryl and wish you all good evening.
Have a good evening, Jack.
All right. Thank you all. Take care. Bye-bye.
So the, one of the great advantages of working in this district is that we have an absolutely awesome elementary team. And we've collaborated on our plans. So what Liz has in her plan is a lot what I have in my plan. There are some individual differences because of size and number of staff, of course. But we've collaborated a great deal over the last couple of weeks with not just Liz, but with Carrie, who's new at Central, and with Laura at Suckstance River, and Karen up there in Bellis Falls. So this is a culmination of a lot of great minds working together to create these plans. So this first part about hybrid learning is pretty much the same as what Liz talked about. Will be the same at Grafton as it is at Westminster. You know, the difference will be obviously is the number of students. And we don't need to do pods. They're already, you know, small enough. Much of our organizing will be done K to two and three to six, especially when it comes to the specials. Let's see, some other differences. Liz talked a lot about our plan of having a common planning tool that we'll be using throughout the district. And this is some upcoming PD that Liz and I are going to develop together to help teachers learn more deeply how to do distance learning planning. And I would say that what teachers had to experience in the spring was just like emergency planning. We got to figure out quick what to do, whereas we want to be more cohesive and more intentional going into this fall and get real specific about that planning. So it will be a common planning tool. We'll work on it together. We've been participating in a, it's called distance learning playbook workshops, trying to learn more about how to do that in a really good way. And this work is based on John Hattie's research. And John Hattie is just one of those researchers in the educational world that I've been following for years. And he's, he's really fine-tuned it to a point where you do exactly what's going to get the most effect when you implement this strategy. So it's, it's good stuff to pay attention to. And so we'll be working with our faculty to help them learn more about that. As Liz stated, we have ordered some tents that we'll be putting outside. And because of the great community in Grafton, we're able to put one tent down by the Wyndham Foundation's pond. We're putting one out behind the nature center. There'll be one that will be sort of like close to where the garden is. And then we're, I think, we want, we have another like venue tent, like a wedding tent that's 20 by 20 that we're trying to think about where the best place to put that. Some people are thinking the driveway, others are thinking up in another driveway where some staff park the cars. I'm not exactly sure where that is, but we're brainstorming where to put that. But the idea is that that will be available for specialists to be able to do their learning outside and to bring students there. And I've been in great conversations with Mandy, who is the new library technology person. She's been a, a teacher at Westminster and she's now going to be at Grafton one day a week. And she's going to spend the first six weeks just supporting teachers with students, helping them with accessing online, online learning, helping them get used to their Google Classroom, showing them, you know, how they can take a picture and upload it. And, you know, do all those good things that, you know, have to get done early on to help kids be successful with their remote learning. So I'm excited to work with her. I think she'll be a great addition to the staff. I did meet with the staff this morning and as both Liz and Chris said, this is definitely a work in progress. You know, we go into that meeting thinking we have a good plan and somebody brings up an idea and go, oh, that's great. Let's add that. Let's, that's, that's a much more solid way to think about how to do this. Or that's a great tweak to add to this plan. And then this afternoon, I was reading Liz's plan, updated plan, and she had something in there that I snagged and put into this plan. So it is, I'm. So it is, I'm, I'm excited that this will go out tomorrow to families because I'm sure they will have some input that they will want to share also. And we'll just keep tweaking this plan until it's as tight as possible so that our students can begin the year very successfully, staying safe and staying healthy, but doing lots of great learning. Uh, let's see, anything else that Liz didn't talk about? Well, one of the, one of the things we're talking about in maintenance is Gary is going to work during the school day because of all the requirements that have to be done to keep the building clean and safe and that we're interviewing and talking with a man who can come in and do some evening cleaning once Gary is done to give the, to give the building a thorough once-over. That recommendation is on its way to the superintendent, so hopefully we'll have that nailed down in the next few weeks. You know, we have a arrival and dismissal system, much like Liz's where, you know, there'll be a kiosk where they have to be checked and then help to their classroom and buses will arrive and we'll have that, you know, same secure system where kids will learn the routine of how to come into the building, wash their hands and get settled into their classroom. The health is, this is the part that I stole from Liz about that video, thought that was a great idea. We are asking kids and families to bring, you know, more than one mask so that they can stay healthy. And because we just know with little kids, those, those masks aren't going to last all day, they're probably going to need a few throughout the day. Now we've had, Lori was in our, our meeting this morning, so we got to talk through how the food service is going to be and how it's going to be streamlined with, bring it in and we'll all help get it to the classrooms. It'll get ordered the day before during teachers' morning meetings and she'll have that to be able to do her planning and her cooking and then it'll arrive and, and it will go directly into the classrooms. Now the safety drills, Liz talked about, and try not to repeat myself, and much like what Liz said about the substitutes, we're, we're going to cover each other as much as possible so that we don't have cross-contamination with someone new coming in. My understanding is there's a couple of subs that typically support Grafton, but we're going to try and just keep it within ourselves because the numbers will be small enough that we'll be able to just jump in and help each other out. And the expectations are the same that Liz talked about, you know, we just kind of repeat ourselves to make sure that parents really understand sort of the basic, minimal expectations. And Jessa, I'm really excited about Desiree, our new nurse, because she's been spending the last six years working in a clinic. So she is like up to speed on how to deal with children with COVID. So she's, she's going to be great in helping us know, you know, when to advise parents about, you should call your doctor, they have a fever, they've had it for two days, you have this symptoms, she's going to be awesome. We're very excited to have her joining us. So I think that's, you know, everything unless, that's not different than what Liz already went over. And like I said, this is going out tomorrow to all our families and I assume up on the website. So everyone can have a chance to look it over and think about it and how it's going to apply to their particular situation. And please, by all means, be in touch, give us feedback. As I was describing to the staff today, we feel like we're, you know, flying a plane while we build it. There are no playbooks for this, we're having to figure this out as we go. But thankfully, we've got such a great team that we're working well together and learning from each other and really developing some nice, solid plans.
So there is a question in the, in the, in the chat for you. With the driveway at Grafton, how will drop-off work? Normally, parents cannot enter the driveway for drop-off.
Good question. All right, so this is all based on Gary's and Mary Beth's and other teachers' best judgment on it, because obviously I don't know exactly how it's worked in the past, but the thinking right now is that we will open up the driveway, we're going to encourage staff to park in another parking spot that's close by. And we're going to create like a turnaround where they drive up, there'll be a couple of kiosses, get their health check, be done, say goodbye to their kids, and then they're going to make like a loop around and then back down and out the other side of School Street. Hope that answers that.
Yep, I don't have any other questions in the chat room for you, so I'm going to back over to Cheryl.
Okay, well, thank you. Let me, I know there are not any additional questions right now, but I, I'd like to open it to anyone that, and, and, you know, parents, community members, and also we've got a great group of outstanding teachers who are a part of this call tonight, as well as other community members. So I would just say, anyone who might have a question or a comment at this time, we welcome it. And I'll echo what, what Helen just said, if you've got additional questions afterwards, I mean, please be in touch. And you can be in touch directly with any of the school board members as well. Our email addresses are on the website and, you know, all of us are learning here, we know how serious this is and we all know that we're here to help one another. So there's no question that can't be asked, just, you know, reach out if there's anything on your mind. But, but see, Chris, if there are any additional questions right now or comments from anyone who has joined us tonight, any of the 47 or 48 wonderful people who are here this evening.
Do we have an estimate on takers for the online plan yet? Um, yeah, I mean, Dr. Carrie sent it out last night at 12 o'clock at night to make sure that people got, everyone got the registration for the online learning. As of 12 o'clock this afternoon, we're already up to 54 students who registered for that. And right now, it seems like, right now, they're all from Rockingham, but we'll keep a close eye on that to, to continue to, to report out numbers.
Chris, I see a question in my chat that hasn't been dealt with.
Yep.
It says, "The first week may need to be adjusted because we start school on a Tuesday."
Yes, that was mine, that was my response.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and keep in mind, we started working on this plan before the governor said September 8th is the date back. And so like we keep saying, it's a working plan. And so on Monday, I'm going to work with my administrative team and all the principals, we're going to take another look at that to see what the best options are and, and how the first week should look. So stay tuned for, for that as well, please.
Okay.
Again, any, any comments, any questions? I'm seeing all these familiar names in front of me here on my screen and we're just welcome hearing from any, any of you.
Pretty quiet right now.
Okay, well, again, I encourage people to reach out after this meeting at any time. I think both Liz and Helen is our wonderful school principals here. We're very fortunate that Helen has just joined us and we're delighted that Liz has made the move from Grafton over to Westminster. So all in all, our communities are very, very fortunate to have two experienced and very thoughtful and very talented principals and staff, all the way around. So as both, both Helen and Liz had said, these are works in progress and Chris is echoing the same thing as is Lynn Carey. We know that we, we all need to be alert and we all need to be looking and listening if, if things are not as smooth as we would all hope. Let people know, we'll do what we can to improve things. At the same time, I would say that I think we're off to a very good start by having a design that allows for smaller groups, physical distancing, as much outdoor time as possible. We know from the scientific research that masks, physical distance and hygiene make a huge difference, as does being in an outdoor rather than a closed, confined setting. So all these things help us and especially really the, the, the smaller group size. And actually, there's a bonus that comes with this in that our teachers and other support people will be able to work with the students even more individually in this first six weeks as a result of the reduced class size that they're, that they're working with each day. We know that the remote learning will be a challenge. I think it's much improved over what we went through in the spring. But having said that, you know, we want to make sure that the children are supported to learn every day, which means while they're on the grounds of the school, but also at home. So the structure for that is being, is being planned. And you saw Liz and Helen both talking about appointments where support may be needed for children. So everyone, parents and others, know that we are really working to have support systems in place. You might notice, you guys, that I'm, I'm on Davidson Hill Road and Emily Leef, I can relate to this, we don't have the best internet up here. So when you see me disappear, I'm still here, I can hear you, that's why I'm on the phone. But when my face disappears, it's because my internet has dropped for a moment. But at any rate, I'm still here on the phone, so I can hear you and you can hear me. If there are no more comments, we'll take some action, but let me give you an opportunity one last time if anyone wants to make a comment or ask a question.
Sure, I'd like to add something. I think, you know, we've had a lot of meetings lately and I am just very pleased to see the turnout of public to last night's, over 208 people, we have 45 on tonight because we want your questions, because we don't want to do this alone. And the only way we can do it successfully is by getting these questions and, and, and so we can continue to work on the plan. I think Helen hit the nail on the head when she said, we feel like we're flying the plane and building it at the same time. But I can't say enough about how pleased I am with the participation from the community, from the boards, and especially my administrative team and the teachers. I mean, they, the amount of work that, you know, they've been doing over the summertime, I don't know how much of a break the teachers and parents and administrators are getting, it's pretty constant, but I've been very impressed with the, the hours and time that they've been putting in, teachers, administrators alike. So I just wanted to thank everyone who's been involved up to this point. It hasn't been easy for any of us and we know that no matter what we do, we're not going to meet the needs of everybody. But from the beginning, we've said that the decisions that we're going to make are what's best for the safety for the students and the staff that are going to be doing this every day. And I think we're going to, we need to keep that in the forefront. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chris. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion that we ratify the decision of the Windham Northeast Supervisor Union last night to approve the plan to reopen the schools. I think it should be a ratification, so I'd entertain a motion to ratify the approval of the plan to reopen the schools in Windham Northeast and specifically, in our case, Athens, Grafton and Westminster.
So moved, Lynn Morgan.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there a second? Not that we need it, but is there a second?
Second, Melissa Carlsdahl.
Oh, thank you, Melissa. Okay. So our protocol for voting on motions while we're in this virtual mode is to go through a roll call. And let me hope that I can see everybody here, but we, I'll just ask each person what your vote is, yes or no, on this motion. Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Jessa West Clark?
Yes.
Melissa Carlsdahl?
Yes.
And Charles is not with us and I vote yes. Jack is in absence right now, but I know he would vote for it as well. So thanks, thanks, everybody. And again, to all of you who came to express comments, concerns, and just to listen, we appreciate all the support. I think that with that done, the official adoption of this plan to reopen our schools effective September 8th with all the planning, it's underway now and will continue. I think our next item of business, Liz Hardy, is a new hire, if you could help us with that, please.
Yeah, Westminster will be welcoming Pauline Gray as a new fourth grade teacher. The great story about Pauline as a student at Keene State, she was able to student teach about five years ago with Ann B T in second grade. And so then she finished her education at Keene State, she went on to receive her masters at BU as a reading specialist and has been teaching elementary school at, at a charter school in Massachusetts, but has always wanted to get back to Westminster. As you hear from so many teachers around here, this area just holds a special place in their heart and she is thrilled to be joining Westminster as an incoming fourth grade teacher.
What do we need to do simply to approve the, I would say that this is a regular elementary position, that's the way we normally approve it. And the spelling of her name, Liz?
Pauline, P-A-U-L-I-N-E, Gray, G-R-E-Y.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm trying to remember, there's a specific way we have to word it.
We'll help you.
I can't remember if we have to authorize them to hire the teacher at a specific step salary or something to that effect? Does that ring any bells with anyone?
I don't think we need to. Oh, Chris can help, go ahead.
Oh, yes, Chris is here.
Seems like every board's been doing it differently lately and I think you'll be, you'll be fine either way, but we can certainly do the step, it's whatever you guys prefer at this point.
She has three years.
My experience is that we, that, that we approve the hiring of the person by name as an elementary teacher at the Westminster Center School.
I will move that we approve the hiring of Pauline Gray as an elementary teacher in Westminster.
Thank you. A second?
Second, Lynn Morgan.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. All right, let me call on you then, Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Jessa West Clark?
Yes.
Melissa Carlsdahl? Your, your vote, Melissa? I didn't hear it or see it?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll vote yes as well. So thank you and give our congratulations and thanks, Liz, to Pauline Gray. We're delighted to have her come aboard.
Awesome.
Great. And then next order of business, actually, what I see is, let me jump down to the date of the next board meeting because there's some question about it and then we'll have director's comments and we'll go close the meeting. I think there's no need for an executive session tonight, is that correct, Chris?
Yes, that is correct, there's no need.
Thank you. So we at our last, our reorganization board meeting voted that the regular meetings of the Athens, Grafton, Westminster School Board, the union school board, would be on the second Tuesday as an optional meeting and the fourth Tuesday as a regular meeting of each month. So either the second or the fourth or both, and actually it would be the, the fourth again as a, as a regular meeting and the second as an optional meeting. That, the second Tuesday of the month of August is next week, August 13. Our regular meeting under this new schedule would be August 27. So my question to you is whether you want to meet next week? Do we think there's a need during this time, during this planning process? And Chris, maybe you can help us, whether you think there are reasons that the board should meet? Or should our next regularly scheduled meeting be on Thursday, August 27? I'm open to any comments or suggestions about that.
I mean, I don't, I mean, it's tough to say at this point, you know, I'll end one board meeting and think people are all set and then two days later I'm asking them to, to call a special meeting. At this point, I don't see anything beyond this, but I would say have the next meeting the 24th and if you need something sooner, I'll work with the principal and the board chair to get it out there.
Thank you. And I think actually, August 27, I think is the, the fourth Tuesday of August. It's my sense, and, and I'm open to others commenting on this, but it's my sense that our teachers, our principals, our administration have so much to do right now that we don't need another board meeting unless there is some special reason that you need our action. unless there is some special reason that you need our action for something. I would just say, go forth and do all the great work.
I agree.
So, well, all right. Let's plan on August 27 unless something comes up that requires board's action. And with that, let me just invite director's comments and I'll begin with Lynn Morgan.
Just thank you to everybody for all the hard work you're doing. It sounds great and I think it's falling into place. We'll make it.
Jessa West Clark?
No, thank you guys for all the hard work. And I was just looking at CDC guidance and the AOE guidance. And I realized the Vermont AOE has not updated their strong, healthy start guidance since June 17th. So it actually contradicts some of the CDC guidance. And I'm disappointed that the AOE hasn't updated it in a month and a half when it's so important to every school in the state. So good job, you guys, doing it without their help.
Thank you for recognizing that, Jessa.
Melissa Carlstrom, any any director's comments, please?
Yeah, I just want to say that as a parent, I'm incredibly grateful that my child will get to attend a minimum of two days in Westminster. Being home was hard at times and he's excited to be back. I also am going to share just our own family's hardship for a second, and that's in our decision making processes to figure out how two working parents will only be able to do this option. The irony that my husband and I keep running into as we try to problem solve is that our best solution for our child to be supervised, like just supervised, is for them to come to work with me in Wyndham Southeast and to be in a classroom program of older siblings that we're just inventing to serve families and be exposed to children from three different schools to then go back and have less exposures. So I'm just throwing that out there as we keep problem solving and moving forward, that the things that people are doing and what's happening. So thank you.
That's that's incredibly helpful, Melissa. And I want to make a comment about that as well. I'm looking and seeing that we still have 34 people and I'm, as is everyone, very grateful for all of this, both at last night's meeting. Actually, last night's meeting and certainly you've alluded to it, Melissa, there are great many challenges for many of our children, parents, families in all of the schools throughout the Supervisory Union. And I know that board members are already talking about what what can be done, as is the administration, as are teachers and others, and certainly the principals. So please bring those issues that come up to us. We can't solve every problem. We're, you know, our first priority is, as Chris has said, the children's health and well being and their education. But the extent to which we can also be alert to trying to be creative, to provide additional support where we can, let's just see what we can do to make this as healthy and safe and fulfilling for everyone as we possibly can. So with that, thanks to everybody and and be well. Thank you for all your participation this evening. Good night.